Welcome to our Hope FM Candidate Forum. I'm Robyn Robinson, and today we're introducing you to two candidates that are running for Putnam County School Board District Two, David Buckles, who is the incumbent, and Leon Edenfeld. And this is a nonpartisan race, which means everyone, regardless of party, gets to vote in the primary election coming up on August 20th. We feel like we can offer you an impartial forum because we don't do any political advertising, Hope FM doesn't endorse any particular candidates or parties. We just want you to be an informed voter and pray about it, go to the polls, and make sure you cast your ballot in all these upcoming elections. I want to say thank you to both of the candidates for being here today. They'll each have one minute to answer each of the questions, and we're going to alternate who goes first for each of those questions. And then we've got a timer going that'll help them to realize when their one minute is over, and then they'll just wrap up their answers so we can move on to the next one. So with that being said, we're going to start with our current school board member, David Buckles. Mr. Buckles, tell us about yourself.
Well, obviously, David Buckles, I was born in St. Augustine, but I lived in Palatka. We went over there for the doctor at Flagler Hospital a long time ago. But, you know, I grew up in Palatka, right on the grounds of the Palatka Senior High School, which became Palatka South High School, which became Beasley Middle School, and now CLO Center. But my mother was a teacher. She taught many years at the old Maudsley Preschool under Ms. Lillian Stanton, and then she taught at Penile Academy for thirty-something years as a teacher. And I have a sister that was a teacher, two daughters that are teachers. I obviously was a teacher and Dean, Assistant Principal-Principal here in Putnam County. I have three children, eight grandchildren throughout Putnam County Schools, and lifelong resident. And I've been Teacher Dean, Assistant Principal-Principal, School Superintendent, and School Board Member after being appointed by Florida Governor Rick Scott when he was in tenure.
All right. Thank you so much. And next, Leon Edenfeld, tell us about yourself.
Well, for one, I was born in Palatka, grew up in Bosswick. I was a class of seventy-eight. I've been married to my wife Janice for forty-three years. We have two daughters and one son, whom's deceased, and five grandchildren. I'm retired Air Force Master Sergeant with fourteen years in Military Human Resources, also a retired GS Nine Business Professional with the Department of Defense, and a certified government purchaser, who, at the time, I had to help manage multimillion-dollar budgets going through audits and reconciliations. I'm the pastor of St. John's Baptist Church out on West River Road, the director of St. John's Christian School, the administrator of our brand-new VP K and Childcare Program, the owner of L.E. Land Clearing, and a member of the American Legion, Burt Hodge, post forty-five. I attended Community College of the Air Force while serving our country, and I graduated from, with my BS, from Liberty University.
All right. Thank you so much. And we'll have you go next, first, for the next question, and that is, why do you want to serve on our school board?
Primarily because of the concerns teachers and parents share with me, but yet they're not stepping up to serve because they don't realize that anybody can apply to serve. It's not, too many think educators only can be on the school board, and that's a fallacy. But I want to serve the teachers and parents to ensure we're actually preparing our students for life after graduation, not just to walk across the platform. And Robyn, as an educator and a school director, I've had both parents and teachers share their concerns with me for years about the disrespect, the bullying, classroom chaos, and the violence on campus. And I'm actually appalled by it, and I've dealt with this in my school because my students come from all walks of life to include the public school system, and I don't have those issues at my school. I do have a plan and a pathway to take effective measures to bring respect and order back into the classroom.
Thank you. And Mr. Buckles, why do you want to continue to serve on the Putnam County School Board?
Well, I have a mind full of information that's really not good for much of anything else than knowing how to operate a school, keep kids safe, and teachers, and run a school system, and I've got the success background to prove it. I have two granddaughters now studying to be teachers, and they help coach volleyball. I've got a daughter that coached volleyball, hundreds of volleyball girls that call me Papa. So, you know, it's, it's, it's just, when you know that you've got over a thousand employees and over ten thousand kids, you understand the unique situation that comes with going to bed at night and worrying about that. And as a principal and a superintendent for many years, I understand what the needs are, and I've taken, you know, over the years, I've spent enough time, whether being in court for confiscating drugs off of kids and wound up in appellate courts of the state of Florida changing how, how the drugs were, you know, called, or what you could do legally, and taking loaded handguns away from kids at school, or knives, and, you know, even bomb threats at the schools.
And so I'll go to you first for the next question. What unique skill do you bring to the board that the other candidates or current board members don't have?
Well, as, as a principal of an award-winning school in the state of Florida, this is a close look at successful schools. When I was principal at Manning Pier School, we were selected as one of twenty-one model schools in the state of Florida of high poverty, high achieving schools. I understand the poverty rates we have in Putnam County. I don't think anybody wants to use that as an excuse, but it's a fact. You know, I've just been out there. I've been with FBI agents looking for children who have been murdered by classmates. I've spoken at funerals of more teachers and kids that have passed away over the weekends, and I would like, and I've had employees die in my office over the years. So, you know, I, I, not only do I understand the empathetic part of loving and caring for your employees, I've got the academic success and, you know, to prove my background on what I've done.
And Leon Edenfeld, same question for you. What unique skill do you feel that you bring to the board that the other candidates or current board members don't have?
Well, for one, I'm not running to make, being on the school board, a career. I'm running to address the issues at hand and bring resolve. I've spoken about my professional background, which is very diverse, and I will be proud to compare and to share my background or resume with anyone. Most of my experiences have come at the expense of the, have not come at the expense of taxpayers and the students. It's come by being accountable for my own decisions. And the issues we face today didn't just happen this summer. It's been something that has been going on for the past twenty years, and the issues we're facing with have arisen. And every government position I've ever held has consequences that I was held to immediately. If I made an unwise decision, a bad choice, or poor planning, or even neglectful spending, those consequences could actually lead to immediate dismissal from my job, cost me my career, and even have legal recourse. So with that, it's been a very serious thing. So, anyway, I, I have my background, I shared at the beginning, and it pretty well speaks for itself.
And why do you think that teachers and school district employees would want you to represent them on the board?
Well, I guess I can honestly start with by saying, just let them look at where they're at today and ask themselves, what do I have to lose? I mean, listen, when it comes to business, I'm a no-nonsense individual. I take it very serious. Boards business should be teachers, employees, and students. Teachers got to have an environment conducive for learning, and it doesn't have to be a brand-new school. All employees must have a competitive pay and benefits, and that's really commensurate to their position in order to maintain and attract the talent we need to grow and promote longevity. And of course, our students, they deserve the type of school we grew up in. Where's it gone? And look where we're at today. And I, that's why I'm, I'm running to, to bring back some of that that our students deserved that we had when we were kids.
And David, same question. Why do you think that the teachers and employees of the school district would want you to represent them on the board?
Well, I think they understand that I've got the background. I served three years as the Chairman of Florida, State of Florida School Labor Relations Commission. You know, I understand collective bargaining. I understand the needs of the people that are out there in our schools. Many of them are my former students. And, you know, they want somebody that really understands, and you talk about discipline. I mean, I've been on Good Morning America and interviewed for kids that plotted to mass murder kids at a school here in Putnam County. So I, you know, it's not that I don't have the background, I have the experience. I know where and when to do things that, that are important to the future of our kids and our safety and security of our employees. And when it comes to academics, whether it's class size mandated by the state of Florida or, or from the times that I got to go meet President George Bush for things that we've done in Putnam County Schools, or spent time with Jeb Bush, and, you know, in Tallahassee, the governor's mansion, planning for rural school districts in the state of Florida, I, I have the background and know what to do, when, when to do it.
And similar question. Why do you think the parents of children that are in school would want you representing them on the school board?
Well, I mean, just take one look at the Guardian program. We've got a nationally recognized program. I hear people talking about, well, you need a resource officer in every school, which would be nice, but when you do that, you have a uniformed person that can be watched, and they can be planned on, and you can have somebody who's a derelict somewhere trying to get into a school and do damage. That's why it's good to have anonymous armed personnel on your schools. I think the parents here know my background. They know that I, you know, I've been to the, been to the mat for the kids in Putnam County, and it's, it's really, and this would only be my, this would be my last term because I, term limits would knock me out, but I, I have promised the teachers and people that know me that I would do this one more time to try to keep our kids and grandkids safe in schools.
And Leon, same question. Why do you think that the parents of kids in school would want you representing them on the board?
Well, for one, because their concerns are my concerns, and I'll be their voice on the board. It's a job with responsibilities, not a position. And as a military man, a school director, a pastor, administrator, a business owner, serving people's been my whole life. I'm not only running to fix issues or making teachers and employees and students leave our public school systems, but to bring real business sense to the planning and expanding side of the house. I'm not sitting here trying to run for reelection for my third and fourth time. I'm here to do a job, get it done, and allow somebody else to take the seat and take it to a new level. But I'm on a mission to address the issues that parents, teachers, and students have brought to me over the past four years.
And how would you ensure the safety of our children and school staff?
Robyn, that's a good question. You know, school threats, primarily, they can be addressed in two ways, within the campus and outside the campus. To get the heart of violence, you must get to the issue of the heart. Change the heart, change everything. Campus violence must be addressed and dealt with fairly, firmly, and quickly. This is what I, you know, how I deal with it in my school. Everyone must know the rules of engagement, know what to expect if they do not follow the rules, and then be held accountable. And when students know the line doesn't move, they don't cross it. They don't cross it because they learn of its consequence. The school's about learning, and they have to learn the disciplines necessary to be instilled in them for correction, and it's not a punishment. It's to help them to prepare for life after graduation. And when it's done in love, and when you apply wisdom, students learn, and they learn to comply, and that's what you want to do, is learn them. And when it's done fairly and consistently, respect follows, and the campus violence reduces. And I feel, actually, the second part of your question, law enforcement and train staff, I think they've done a real good job of what they do to help combat off-campus attempts to come in. I'm, I'm good with that.
And Mr. Buckles, same question. How would you ensure the safety of our children and our school staff?
Well, the state of Florida has mandated new, new checks on gates and locks for all schools in the state of Florida. We're, we're building and refurbishing schools to meet glass that is bulletproof. I mean, this is no longer the same world that it was when many of these schools were built, and all the new schools that are being built will be built to the new safety standards, where they not only can be used for, for, you know, facilities of, like during hurricanes or like a train derailment when we had people die in Crescent City, and we had to lifeflight people with a helicopter from the school site there, and I stayed down there during that time. But we, we, we have a lot of stuff going on with this Guardian program and the teachers, and, you know, it, it's really, it's not as it seems. I mean, you can hear the bad stuff, but we are a mirror of society. If you have a gunshot in a community or a fight in a community that spills over into your schools, it's going to be the same thing. And that's why we've now got upgraded cameras with artificial intelligence that can recognize, facially recognize someone that may show up at a football game or on a school campus immediately. And we now have to use metal detectors to get into graduation, and, and it's not going to get better in, in America. It's, it's going to be this way from here on.
And Mr. Buckles, we'll stay with you for the next question. What are your thoughts on Title IX?
Well, having daughters that played sports in school, and we had to go all over Putnam County to find ball fields for them to play softball on, and, you know, during my term as superintendent, we built softball fields for girls so we could comply with Title IX because you have to have equitable, or had to have equitable athletic facilities for girls, just like you do biological males for the boys' sports. But my thoughts are, recently, we had a presentation before the board that I, you know, I understand people feel passionate and want to know what your thoughts are with Title IX, which essentially delineates between what a biological male and a biological female can participate in, whether it's sports or restrooms or whatever. I mean, who in their right mind would be for a girl having biological males come into the shower room where they might be? It's, it was, I thought that it was, it was noble to come before the board with a proclamation, but when you do that after the Commission of Education, and the governor of the state of Florida had repeatedly said, do not take any action locally, I think it was, it's risky because you delineate your school district as, as being this district standing for this noble cause, and you might have somebody in a nearby state that comes in and pulls an action that we wouldn't even want to think about, like the Covenant School shooting in Nashville, where they come in and shoot up a school simply because of some narrative that's been floated. So, you know, I've got girls, the National Guard would have to drag me away from in front of the restroom before I let a biological male go in there with them.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Edenfeld, your thoughts as well on Title IX?
Well, I agree with the establishment of the original Title IX that was brought to be in nineteen seventy-two. However, I totally disagree with the amendment that's proposed right now to Title IX that's come down from the U.S. Department of Education. Because of the fact, it does open the door. It sounds great, just like all of them, you know, equal opportunity for everyone, but that includes taking away your right to not allow altered sexes to participate in various settings, bathrooms, locker rooms, this type. Bottom line is where I stand on this, the campus is not, is for academia and learning for life skills, and it's not a platform to provoke or entertain perversion of any kind, to include the wokeism, transgender, or gender misidentification, the LGBTQ, or even this pronoun ridiculousness. It's all something that, that needs to be kept at home, not to be brought on campus, be promoted and flaunted, and to try to confuse our students. But we need to come to school to learn, to make friends, compete properly among the biological sexes, and prepare oneself to seek college or a career after graduation, and that's where I stand on that.
And what would you want to say to the taxpayers that oppose the thirty-year bond on the property taxes to build new schools?
Wow, that's a good one. Let's stop it as quickly as possible. By the way, the payback is not necessarily thirty years. It could be as much as forty, depending on how the money's taken and drawn out. Tax rate from the bond repayment is absolutely going to put those who live on a fixed income in financial despair. Their taxes will grow at a rate much faster than their income adjustments will, and my heart breaks for the low-income household. I grew up in one. I know the challenges and the hardships. I wasn't, I'm from Bosswick, where we grew up in an economically challenged community, and never was silver spoon fed or had my education, everything paid for. I had to work for everything I ever got, and through the struggles of life, and my heart hurts for the low-income families.
And Mr. Buckles, same thing. What would you want to say to the taxpayers that oppose the thirty-year bond on the property taxes to build new schools?
Well, we paid off the bond from the eighties while I was school superintendent, and we were glad to be rid of that, that debt. And then during my tenure as school superintendent, we, we tried to prop up and remove mold and, asbestos from all the other existing facilities to the best of our ability, and, and it was very expensive, but we were able to do that and preserve those in case we need them, if we get a huge development. But, you know, the people of Putnam County voted for this. They wanted the schools, and if you're not in favor of letting the people decide what they want, you know, then so be it. But, you know, I, I even talked with the superintendent. I said, this is going to, in the eighties, this was a very controversial thing. We had taxpayers' league forums and different things, and when it passed, you know, we built new schools, and, and we're going to be building some of the finest schools. Kids in Crescent City, where, where most of the kids that'll show up for kindergarten this year cannot speak English, deserve just as nice a schools as the kids in Palatka or Antilockin. And we're going to do that for these kids, and it'll last for forty or fifty years.
And what do you feel are the biggest challenges facing our school district right now, and how would you propose to make improvements?
Well, we've got, it's twofold. You know, safety and security, to me, is one of the biggest challenges. You know, we can, we can expel a student for up to two years from public school, and it's, it's hard to put them on the road when you, you know they're going to be up to no good, and, but, and the flip side is, when you look at the economic status of the people of Putnam County and, and being Title I county in the state of Florida, we're one of the poorest counties in the state of Florida. I saw recently where somebody compared our district to Lafayette County. This whole deal with the Florida grading system, when you have grades, is to, is to try to declare failing schools. And as soon as you get your poorest F school up to, up to an A or a B, the state of Florida will raise the standards again. The same school will drop back down to an F because it's going to be high poverty or high minority schools. And it's, it's just, you know, it's a problem we have to live with. If you ever rode a bus and watched them feed kids down there off Clifton Road and Ferner Reeves, and, and the people that are hungry, go to Hollister and watch them feed the people at the food bank out there. Understand where these kids are living in tool sheds and some of the situations they're living in, and, and when you're in a situation like our principals and have to deal with sexual abuse of children, you understand the problems, the drugs. Kids bring cocaine to school when they're in elementary school and don't even know they've got it, and parents come to school and want it back, you know? So we've got problems in Putnam County, but we're, we're working on them.
And same question. What do you feel are the biggest challenges facing the school district?
Well, for one, the, the biggest challenge, we have a pretty, we're focused in already on the violence issues. We don't have to recreate, recreate the will. They've already got the funding in place to take, you know, to put manpower there to deter the safety factors of modifying our buildings for storms and this type thing, and bulletproof glass. We are being reactive, in my opinion, to what we can, are fearful of, and not employing strategic moves to deter it as well, through education to help reduce the violence. Building new schools, brand-new schools, ain't going to increase our graduation ratios or improve classroom academics. They're only going to increase debt. We can do a lot more things with the money with our present schools without having to actually build brand-new ones, especially in a, like Mr. Buckles said, we're one of the poorest counties in the state. But I feel right now, Robyn, one of the biggest challenges we face that is one that the board's created. We have people right now leaving our school system left and right because of the school choice program, that where they are allowed to have their monies and take it elsewhere, like to private schools or charter schools or homeschool. And so what will happen if we're not careful, long-term, if you don't look downrange, you won't see it, but long-term, we're going to end up with three-hundred-million-dollar debt, and brand-new schools with students that are not there because they're all in private school and homeschool, and they take the funds with them. So if we're not careful, we're going to have all this debt and no students funding to pay it back. So with that, that's something that we need to stop the exodus.
And are there any other areas of concern that you'd like to mention we haven't covered?
Yeah, Robyn, as a school director, and I've worked year-round on school budgets, transportation, payroll, maintenance, building, expansion, security, all of it. I do everything. And I do it as if it's my very own money, because when our school started, I used a lot of my personal, very own money to get it started. So I've learned to spend money as if it's my own, not somebody else's. And when you do it right, you can do a lot with a little, but not when you spend it knowing that others have to pay for it, but it's a time for change.
And same question. Are there any other areas of concern we haven't covered that you'd like to mention?
There are. You know, I'll just respond real quick to what Leon just said. You know, there, there are a lot of situations that this voter-approved bond issue bring, but, I mean, it's, you can't take the bonds now and send them back. You can't do those things. You know, some of them are sold, and it's just, doesn't work that way. But one thing I wanted to say is that really was, I think we need to really concentrate, and we are concentrating even better, on early learning. And, you know, that was something I worked on with Governor Bush and, you know, back when he was governor, and subsequently, we, we were, you know, became a, a model school in, in Florida, but, a district at times, and I was honored for that, but I could go through all these accolades here, but it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean anything. Problem is, we know by third grade who our high school dropouts are probably going to be, and we have things in place now and programs in place to isolate and get these kids. There's no really correlation between class size and K-three to instruction. It's, it's more or less how you've got to identify the ones that need it the most and do pullouts to individualize instruction with those kids. So we, we've got, we've got a good prescription going on right now.
So as you would imagine, us being a ministry, we do want to ask what role your faith might play in your decision-making as a school board member?
Well, that's a, that's a really good, good thing to ask. I was, I requested with the State of Florida Chief Executive Officer Leadership Development Committee when I was a school superintendent to be trained in how to provide constitutionally-approved student-led prayer. And it was sent to Nashville to the Peabody Education College, has a central location to meet with representatives from the Southern Poverty Law Center, who was against doing a lot of the things you would want to do, and, and others from around the nation. And, and, you know, at that time, I put "In God We Trust" on all school board letterhead. I put "In God We Trust" up. I let the principals put it up at their schools, and they, they're still free to do that. But I've got to tell you, people can say what they want. They can say wokeism, they can say whatever. I've had a daughter and four grandchildren baptized on school board property this year by a church at the CLO Center, the Branch Church. I've been in attendance over there. I've watched other people be baptized, and if you know how to do it. I've watched kids at graduation this year. If you've got a chance to go to the graduation ceremonies, you will, you will have heard some of the most wonderful prayers. Now, with that comes the, the caveat that, as we haven't had in the past, we might have a student who's of a different faith that stands up, gives her approved speech in English, and then is a valedictorian, and it comes out as, after they do the English version, they come out in Arabic in praise to Allah. So you, you have to let them worship in their way, and it's got to be student-led, it can't be led by adults.
And same question. What role might your faith play in your decision-making as a board member?
Well, I understand what Mr. Buckles is saying. He's right. I mean, of ours, but as far as the decision-making aspect, my faith plays a role in everything. It's everything. My moral compass is God's Word, and as a Christian, I'm called to be a selfless servant to the Lord and to the people. Alexander Hamilton once said that "Those who stand for nothing fall for anything," and I stand on God's Word. And, listen, Robyn, I'm a sinner saved by grace, and I was very good at sinners, okay? I was very good at it, but I'm no better than anyone else. But since Jesus saved my lost soul, I now live a better life because I've lived for Him, and I live to be better because I'm a child of God. I live to please and serve others, not so much as myself as I used to. But my moral compass is established by God's Word, and it affects all my decisions, not just, not with a bias in religious, being religious. It's not about religious aspect, it's about my moral compass.
And just one question to wrap up with. Why should people vote for you?
Well, let's see. Most people know the definition of insanity, as we'd say it, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. If you want things to stay on course the way they are the past four, ten, twelve, fifteen years, don't vote for me. If you want someone that's going to address the issues that is currently being given from parents, teachers, and students, even bus drivers, then I'm your person. I have a pathway set, and I am a fixer, and I will get in, get the job done with the objectives that's established, and be willing to step out and let somebody else take it. But that's where I'm at with that. Vote Leon Edenfeld, your voice for your students. You can learn more about me on Google or my Facebook.
Okay. Thank you so much. And Mr. Buckles, why should people reelect you for the school board?
Well, you know, I could go through these lists of, you know, Crystal Star of Excellence Award from the Dropout Prevention Center, Clemson University, University of Academic Alternatives dropout rates, and my appointments to the Gates Foundation years ago, and the leadership board of the Gates Foundation for Florida, the Rural Community Superintendent Advisory Panel for Governor Jeb Bush, did that for seven years, and Northeast Florida Domestic Security Task Force, appointed by former St. John's County Sheriff Neil Perry, and I could go on and on and on about these things. But if you- And I could go on and on and on about these things. But if you don't understand or know who I am, you need to ask some former students, or ask someone that has known me, and it's not going to be too hard to find, because everywhere I go, I can't hide. And that, I really have gotten to the point over the years, it's hard to go out to eat, because I can't eat, because people come up and want to ask me questions. But if you want somebody that's going to answer your phone calls and do what you need to help you get your kids in a school that you want, when you can, and, and will do everything that's legally possible to help do that, give me a call.
And you're welcome to share any contact information or?
Uh, David Buckles for school board, District Two. My, I've got a daughter that handles most of that, but I, or I would have had these questions in advance. My new phone has got me off, so, anyway.
Well, thank you both so much for taking the time to come and talk with us today, and we appreciate your participation in our forum. This is a public service of ninety-one point three Hope FM. We will provide the recordings of this and many other forums online for voter information, and candidates are welcome to share those. As a reminder, primary election is August twentieth, and early voting opportunities are August fifth through the seventeenth. And if you have any questions about voting, or where to vote, anything like that, consider contacting the Supervisor of Elections Office, or visit their website at voteputnamflorida.gov. Thank you so much for watching, and God bless you.